It's called the February Council meeting to order, please stand for the special edition.
Would the clerk please conduct a roll call?
Heidi?
Here.
Flinker?
Here.
Nargie?
Here.
Reynolds?
Campbell?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Downing?
Here.
Oliver Smire?
Here.
Item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the January council meeting. What's the pleasure of the council, Mr. Campbell?
I move the minutes to be approved as communicated.
Mr. Brown?
What?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as communicated. Any questions or comments regarding the minutes? All those in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approved. Thank you, the minutes are approved. Presentation and disposal of claims?
None.
Presentation of petitions and communications?
None.
And reports the city offices on file in the city clerk's office?
Clerk's office December, fleet maintenance December, water works department December, water pollution control department December, police department November and December.
Okay, those reports are on file in the clerk's office and may be read during regular business hours. We are on ordinance for second reading this evening, two thousand fifteen dash oh one.
An honor submitting section seven point zero six point three four zero, vehicle immobilization to include amount of service charge for wheel lock removal.
Mr. Flinker?
I move here ordinance two thousand fifteen oh one on second and final reading.
Mr. Heidi?
Charles.
It's been moved and seconded to hear ordinance two thousand fifteen dash zero one, and again, Mr. Charles Nick, would you like to address the amendment?
It's really just a simple amendment. The ordinance previously provided that removal of a wheel lock on a vehicle that we use for enforcement, parking and other things upon the payment of a service fee, but the ordinance didn't set out what the service fee was, even though we had established it at the twenty-five dollars, this merely gets that straightened out so that it's in the ordinance.
Any comments or questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Charles Nick. Any comments or questions regarding this ordinance from the public? Okay, seeing none with the clerk, please conduct a roll call vote.
Heidi?
Aye.
Flinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven to zero.
Thank you. The new ordinance is for first reading this evening, so we move on to resolutions. We have resolution two thousand fifteen dash zero two.
A resolution approving the sale of real estate by the Lafayette redevelopment commission, one one two three South Street.
Mrs. Williamson?
I move for passes resolution two thousand fifteen oh two on first and final reading.
Mr. Downing?
Aye.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded to here, resolution two thousand fifteen dash zero two, Mr. Mayor?
Madam Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the council, just to give you a little bit of background on this particular resolution, as you may recall, as part of the City of Lafayette's hearing authority, we had a property located on South Street where there was an old nursing home, and that nursing home sat there vacant for quite some time, caused great concern to the neighbors and concern to the City of Lafayette, and through a lengthy process, Mr. Charles Nick's office was helped to negotiate to get that nursing home turned over to us, I believe the owner was from California at the time, and so after through a lengthy process, the city was able to acquire that property and then through the, again, the Lafayette hearing authority, move through the legal process to demolish that old nursing home and clean up that lot in an effort to remove an eyesore and a possible other uses that we would not want to happen there with a vacant building of that size in that neighborhood. Once that was complete, we went through, again, a legal process with the redevelopment commission and through the attorney's office to attempt to sell that lot, it's been on the market for quite some time, because we did want to make sure that we remain sensitive to the needs of the neighborhood and what the neighborhood felt would be a good fit. As the economy improved somewhat here in the last several months, we've had a few inquiries about the property and we pitched some of those ideas, Mr. Carson, Dennis Carson, our economic development department pitched some of those ideas to the neighborhood and they were not really met with a favorable response. It was not really what the neighborhood had envisioned for the Saint Mary's neighborhood, and so we kind of continued on, and at that point, a neighbor approached me and indicated that he had spoke with the other four neighbors that border that property and they would be willing to go together to purchase that lot from the city and take responsibility for it, the maintenance, put it back on the tax rolls, and then also the responsibility of holding it and working until they could find someone that wanted to build a single family home on that lot, keeping with the historic nature of the neighborhood and in a way that they felt was good for the neighborhood. I thought that was a pretty good idea, it empowers the neighborhood to control their own destiny to somewhat and who has a better stake in what goes there than the four people that are going to have to live whatsoever besides, so we were able to get what we believe is a fair market value for that lot based on its use as a single family home. Mr. Charles Nick's office worked with the neighbors to prepare the necessary paperwork and take the property through the channels that brings us here today, so I would appreciate your vote on this resolution and we will let those neighbors have an opportunity as we did and are partner, we're not partnering the same way, but to me it's similar as the centennial neighborhood townhouses where you have neighbors in a neighborhood wanting to take ownership and help control their own destiny, and I'd appreciate your support on allowing them to do so.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
First, I'd like to say thank you for being proactive on the crime issue and getting that torn down because it could have become a problem and for listening to the neighbors. Is there a rezonant that's going to follow with this?
No.
It's already R one or?
It's actually R two, so they can build a single family home or a duplex, but that's the extent of the choose.
So they'll have to pursue that at that time then, when they find a buyer or?
They're gonna, I mean, they could keep it as garden areas for the four houses or they could find a buyer that wants to build a single family house.
You can build a single family home in an R two.
Until then.
They won't need.
Oh, okay.
You can build a single family in an R two or a duplex, you can build either one.
Either one.
A single family home, they won't be required to go through any rezoning efforts.
Fantastic, even better.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other comments or questions from council? Any comments or questions regarding this resolution from members of the public? Okay, seeing none with the clerk, please conduct a roll call vote.
Heidi?
Aye.
Flinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Any reports of standing committees? Reports of special committees? Mr. Mayor, we have the pleasure of hearing from you this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, that was very gracious of you. Told you it was an hour long, we're still. Cindy already told you that I cut it back. Let our clerk finish distributing those.
I'd be out of breath by then, but she did. The ink's still wet. The ink's still wet.
It's been wet, but it's been done a long time. But only at Scram Shop, it's just me and Lisa, so. Everybody have their coffee? All right. Madam President, members of the city council, citizens of Lafayette and those in attendance tonight, I am honored and humbled to stand before you and present the two thousand fifteen state of the city. It is with a deep sense of gratitude that I serve as mayor. I would like to thank the city council, the board of works, the redevelopment commission, our police and fire merit boards, and all of our citizens who serve on our boards and commissions to keep this community moving forward. One of the foundations of a strong community is to be citizen driven, so I thank all our citizens who participate with our neighborhood associations, helping our schools, volunteer for communities, civic and social service organizations, and those who help at our community events and activities. It takes many people working together to govern and to move our community in a positive direction. I would also like to thank the department heads and our city team members for their continued outstanding efforts. I can tell you, we have dedicated city employees that care about the community and care about the citizens they serve. Our department heads lead with vision, compassion, courage and commitment to those they lead and the citizens they serve. With everyone working together, we have been able to, again, provide high quality services in an extremely efficient and cost effective manner. At this time, I would like to give the council an overview of the city's financial status. We are in sound financial condition. Working with this council, we continue to live within our means and still provide tremendous city services. We currently have two point eight million dollars in our rainy day fund, we have reserves in our edit fund and cash balances in our operating funds. We utilize sound financial principles, forward thinking, strategic planning as we manage our general fund, utility budgets and our TIF funds. We strive to find the balance between reserves, operations and projects. Our commitment to public safety ever wavers. Our police and fire departments are well staffed, well trained and well equipped. In the fire department, we have started the second year of the Lafayette Fire Department Jefferson High School Fire and Rescue Academy. The department has also implemented a new OSHA required medical assessment for all firefighters and a new aerial was delivered to Station Three. Fifteen members of the department received life saving awards. In addition, all officers and commanders on the fire department completed for the first time the blue card type four and five incident management certification program. Two thousand fourteen was another productive year for the Lafayette Police Department. The nine one one communication center answered approximately three hundred and fifteen thousand telephone calls, which generated ninety thousand six hundred and eighty LPD responses. With expansion and growth and the demand for police services, the LPD has continued to evolve. The LPD has embraced technology as a force multiplier, utilizing leading edge technologies that help facilitate our efforts towards community policing by reaching our citizens in different ways. We are utilizing various social media venues to communicate with our community about things that are important to their safety, quality of life and to create open pathways of communication. Nextdoor, a secure social networking site for neighborhoods to share information with one another and a place where LPD can share specific information about crime and safety to each. We have grown to three thousand one hundred and eleven members on Nextdoor or two thousand five hundred and seventy-eight households. Our goal is to reach seven thousand households, which means we would be sharing information with nearly one of every four homes in our city. This is Neighborhood Watch leveraged by the power of community and social media. We now have over six thousand subscribers to MEXL, a community alert system that provides real time information about major events occurring such as traffic accidents that has closed certain roads or a missing child that we need help in locating. Twitter is now at two thousand eight hundred and seventeen followers. We utilize Twitter to share with our community all of the activities that LPD is involved with every day, from our tweet alongs with our officers on the street to updates about community activities. Twitter has been a great way to build relationships. Public access to www.crimereports.com gives every citizen the opportunity to see what type of police activity has been occurring near their homes or anywhere in the city, because we firmly believe an informed and knowledgeable citizenry is one of our best weapons in fighting crimes. In two thousand fourteen, the Lafayette Police Department added three additional police officers through a competitive cops grant. Focusing on community outreach efforts, the LPD graduated two more classes from our citizens' police academy, educating nearly sixty community members about all the activities their police department is involved in. In two thousand fourteen, the outreach efforts also included the first ever junior police academy. The fun and creative program was staffed by our police officers and taught a class of young children about the rewarding career of law enforcement officers and a glimpse into how many opportunities exist in modern policing. In August of two thousand fourteen, our K nine officers competed once again at the K nine Olympics and trials, and I'm going to pronounce this wrong, but I'm going to say Von Lyle Kennels in Denver, Indiana. Over one hundred teams from all over the United States and several international teams competed. The LPD K nine officers won eight awards, including the number one in overall narcotics and also number one in narcotics K nineteen. This is a great example of the highly skilled and professional officers in a very competitive competition. In two thousand fourteen, the Lafayette Police SWAT team competed again in the annual Indiana SWAT challenge. There were nine events over the course of three days. LPD took first place in two events, the hostage rescue and the fiscally demanding obstacle course. This helps seal the overall championship for the second year in a row. Just another example of how hard our officers work, not just in their primary roles, but also in their additional responsibilities which prepare them to provide the best possible service to our community. In two thousand fourteen, the LPD created the Crime Prevention Unit. This unit is designed to look for ways to partner with the community to reduce victimization. By dedicating resources to evaluate individuals and business exposure to crime, we can provide them with information on how to protect themselves from being victims. We can also identify areas in which we can improve service and provide a better value to our community. Two thousand fourteen was another successful year for economic development and community development projects. We celebrated the groundbreaking for almost a four hundred million dollar expansion at SIA. We have expansion projects at Tate and Lyle, both north and south plants. Alcoa opened their new hundred million dollar cast house to create the third generation of aluminum lithium, as Lafayette Auto Supply has begun their expansion project. On July twenty first, the historic groundbreaking of our hundred million dollar GE Aviation Leap Assembly Plant took place, which will bring two hundred great paying jobs to our community. Matchbox, our co-working studio downtown, opened and is already a hundred and twenty-six members strong and has broad support in the community. Downtown also saw the opening of the New Regions Bank. Also, the new Regency Spring upscale apartments are under construction and the new centennial townhomes are going up, a wonderful example of committed neighbors and a public private project. Our parks also had a busy year undergoing a reorganization of their operational structure. We saw the completion and dedication of the Colombian Park Express Train Depot, the construction and completion of the Subaru South Tip Park and initiation of the Memorial Island renovation project. We also had the development and implementation of several new programs, including Art in the Park, Final Fridays Family Moving Night, Walking Towards Wellness and Tails on the Trails. And I'm going to ad lib here for a second, we talked about at the staff meeting today that Tails on the Trails was so popular, we'll be adding more sessions this year for people to participate with their dogs. And we're currently designing a new park for Sterling Heights. In two thousand fourteen, the information technology began the, and this is correct, this is not a mistake, the thirty month process of implementing our enterprise resource system through Tyler Munis. This is, again, I'm ad libbing here, this is by far the single largest computer software upgrade in the history of the city. The new software system will improve workflow models and business rules. It will utilize paperless processes whenever possible. It will significantly improve the flow of data and information sharing between all city departments. It will increase our ability to analyze reports and export data. It will also improve access to information for our citizens and those we conduct business with. Our utilities also had a productive and successful year. Our wastewater department celebrated the opening of our award winning Storm Park at Jefferson High School. This Storm Park not only serves as a functioning piece of our Earl Avenue Dirkies Run system, but serves as a living laboratory and outdoor classroom for students at Jeff. This concept has been well received by the faculty, staff and students. Earl Avenue is now open and we will begin work in the spring to finish the trail, the sidewalks and the riding. Work was completed at Twenty Seventh and Elmwood along with the Tate and Lyle Bank Stabilization Project. The water department, in two thousand fourteen, the water department had two hundred and eighty meters were changed to radio reads this year. That puts us at fifty point five percent throughout the system. As a practical matter, that means we can read half the meters in the city by just driving by them, we no longer have to stop at each meter. In two thousand fifteen, we will change out three thousand additional meters, bringing us to sixty one percent. We will also install antennas in strategic locations that will read these meters from a fixed point and transmit those readings to the billing office via fiber optics without the need to even drive by. A task that used to take hours to perform now literally takes minutes. And if in fact, for all of you from the water department, we installed eleven thousand nine hundred feet of new water main last year. I'm sure everyone remembers last winter and the damage done to our roads. The street department designated a hundred and seventy spots of road failure that required skip patching, pothole filling, crack sealing, and they did all of this while keeping positions open to offset overtime expenses from the winter storm. And again, I'm ad libbing here, we took no money out of our rainy day fund to get through last year's winter. We made adjustments that were necessary to stay and to live within our means. We thought we did a tremendous job getting our roads back into shape. A couple interesting facts to share, during one of the worst winters on record, we only delayed trash service one day. And our recycling program saved us approximately one hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars last year on tipping fees. The engineer's office saw another busy year. They issued a total of two thousand one hundred and fifty eight permits and performed over five thousand inspections, and they addressed twenty seven properties that fell under the unsafe structure ordinance. They coordinated the paving of five point six five centerline miles of city streets and they did not count Sagamore Parkway. Centerline is, we just measure from one end to the other, even though some of the roads obviously have two lanes, but we did five point six five miles of centerline paving. In addition, they coordinated the construction of seven thousand feet of sidewalk, four thousand three hundred and seven feet of curbs and twenty-two ADA ramps. The engineering staff also worked with firms on the design of South Eighteenth Street from Veterans Ramada Parkway to Four Thirty South, Old Romney Road, Sagamore Parkway Phase One and Two, the John T. Myers Bridge and the Realeap Plaza Depot Building. The traffic division, which falls under engineering, replaced street name blades on a hundred and twenty intersections and standardized and modernized all school zone signage. They added five more intersections to our fiber optic network, they added ten solar powered ADA compliant flashing beacons at pedestrian crossings, twenty-four intersections received new thermal plastic, and they painted fifty-three handicap spaces in our parks department. In downtown, thirty-two new parking spaces and four new handicap spaces were created. The community development department also had several successes in two thousand fourteen. We had the creation of the Faith Community Development Corporation with the mission to make improvements in the north end neighborhoods. The following are some of their accomplishments working with the Faith CDC. They completed their first home funded acquisition rehab house and they have started on a second. They planted and harvested a community garden in the Lincoln neighborhood in partnership with the neighborhood and another faith based group from Federated Church. They started the Jobs for Life Program, twelve enrolled in the program and four have graduated. They had three sessions of the Good Neighbor Training with more than thirty participants, and the Good Neighbor Training included a session on understanding poverty. Had a very successful neighborhood block party in the summer with more than a hundred and fifty people attending. They began Faith and Finances Program. The program had nine enrolled, including three graduates in two thousand fourteen. On the issue of homelessness, we continue to make progress. We secured grant funds for the Wabash Valley Alliance and initiated our new partnership with Wabash Valley Alliance to successfully provide therapeutic, psychological and mental health services to people in our community facing homelessness. Adam Murphy, a member of our staff, assisted with the grant applications for the two grants that pay for the PATH program. I'd like to take just a moment to explain what the PATH program does. Wabash Valley Alliance received and invests, what PATH stands for, projects for assistance in transitioning from homelessness. This four year grant supports homeless outreach workers to engage with persons that are chronically homeless with mental, health, substance abuse and physical barriers to housing. We also developed a partnership with Purdue University and student volunteers. Student volunteers maintain predictable routes, multiple days each week wearing distinctive clothing. Then we have low intensity engagement and data gathering techniques employed to build trust and to identify individuals for PATH worker engagements. We also have focused outreach is deployed in out of the way locales to reach those that may be camping in the woods and other places not typically reached by social services. The program officially started in October of two thousand fourteen, but has already served fifty-two persons with case management by the end of two thousand fourteen and worked intensively with twelve individuals. And I think this next one's really important, we talk a lot about projects and everything we do, but we do a lot to help people that probably a lot of the community don't realize that we do. Two persons out of that group were moved to permanent supportive housing during two thousand fourteen. They are continuing to have success engaging with additional people to help them secure permanent housing solutions. Wabash Valley Alliance was also awarded an emergency shelter grant from ICA to be used in conjunction with the funds for the PATH program. Additional work will be done in partnership with a volunteer from the National Alliance on Mental Illness, or known as NAMI, to monitor local jail intake and release for persons that are homeless. Using the monitoring data, PATH workers will focus efforts to target persons exiting incarceration that are frequent users of homeless and emergency medical services. Lafayette, West Lafayette and Tipi Gini County in partnership with the United Way and social service agencies also launched the coordinated access effort to better serve families and individuals facing homelessness. As part of the effort, Lafayette Transitional Housing changed their service model during two thousand fourteen and provided triage and assessment for all persons seeking homeless services. There were a total of nine hundred and fifty-six people served through this new triage and assessment model. Also for our veterans, the Lafayette Housing Authority was awarded thirteen HUD VASH vouchers, I can't say that five times now, to serve veterans experiencing homelessness with mental assistance and services through the Veterans Administration and the Lafayette Transitional Housing Services Social Services for Veterans and Families Program. We also helped to start and fund a winter contingency program in partnership with the United Way and several social service agencies and local congregations, a successful winter contingency program was developed and funded to provide shelter to people facing homelessness when the forty-four bed emergency shelter is full. Shelter plus care, twenty-eight units from the Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority, you may remember we started this program during Weeden Seed, when we did our Weeden Seed program. This year, we housed thirty-three people who were formerly chronically homeless in permanent supportive housing with wraparound case management and other services. housing with wraparound case management and other services. During 2014, four individuals were able to successfully transition off the program to independent housing. Of those, the biggest success story was a gentleman who was able to stabilize his life, secure a good job at SIA, is now reunited with his wife, and lives with her. We also did a lot of work this year in historic preservation, local historic districts. We designated a portion of the historic Centennial Neighborhood as a local historic district to ensure the historic architecture of the properties in that neighborhood is protected for the future. We designated four additional single-site local historic districts for properties that had federal funding investment to rehab the houses. The local historic district designation helps protect the future of the restored property. Centennial Rezone. Our staff worked closely with the Tipi Gumi County Area Plan Commission to rezone the historic Centennial Neighborhood to bring the neighborhood into closer conformance with the future land use plan that was adopted by the Neighborhood Association. I'd also like to take a moment and just embarrass her just a little bit, and to thank Cindy Murray, our city clerk, for all her efforts this year. Besides her regular duties, Cindy is a tremendous representative and ambassador, I can tell you, for the city of Lafayette. She serves on the board of works, the city's Wellness Committee, the statewide IRAC Wellness Committee. She's active in United Way, past chairman, serves on the board for the YMCA, the YWCA, Homestead Consulting, just to name a few. We'd be here a long time. And the clerk's office now is also assisting us with downtown parking and social media. So I want to send a special thank you to Cindy and your staff. As you can see tonight, this is a very busy year, and what you heard tonight was just a small snapshot of what happens every day. I honestly can tell you, this is true, when I first wrote this, it was like 35 or 36 minutes long, and I've cut it way down to like 21 or 22, whatever it's going to be. But really, this is just a small snapshot of the amazing things that are being done in this community every day. And the good news is that 2015 is off to a great start. In January, we cut the ribbon on the new development at the Old Home Hospital Site, the Springs, which is a $14 million project, and 120 new jobs. And another big one, last week, we announced our second project with GE Aviation. The $15 million investment will allow for maintenance repair and overhaul for the new LEAP engine to occur here in Lafayette, creating another 30 great-paying jobs to go along with the 200 for the assembly plant. So again, I'd like to thank this council for the tremendous work you've done, the great partnership with my office, and just making some really remarkable things happen in this community. And 2015, again, is going to be very busy. So thank you to all of you, all the citizens of Lafayette, who make Lafayette an absolute wonderful place, and may God continue to bless our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for that great report, and on behalf of the council, we thank you for your tremendous leadership yet again, and you as well. Ms. Laney is in new business. Any reports from councilmen?
One thing, the other day, Mr. Heidi and I were driving past Jefferson High School, and the parking lot at the, it would be the east end of the parking lot, and they were removing trees, a lot of trees. And I'm afraid that at some point in time, we are going to be confronted with a big-time bill to replace not only those trees, but all of the other trees in the city of Lafayette that have been infested with this mauer. And I think this was done ahead of time, or maybe just in the nick of time. But it was amazing to see about 12 trees removed, and they were pretty good-sized trees. And I think that we're going to see more of those in the city, and I think that we should all be alert to the fact that something is coming down the road about those things.
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. As you probably remember, over the last couple of years, we did a tree inventory through some grants that we received with Davy Tree Company and identified all the potential ash trees that we have in the community, and as Mr. Campbell indicated, is significant. The city of Lafayette treats some of the ash trees, like some of the big ones at Colombian Park and some of the other places that we didn't want to lose. And then we have also been proactive in removing some of those that we know have been infected, and that will continue over the next couple of years. You're absolutely correct. I know, I don't want to speak for Tree Lafayette, I don't know exactly where it is, but I do know that Tree Lafayette, the Jeff High School, is one of their projects for 2015 where they're going to be replacing trees at Jeff through Tree Lafayette. I just have to remember what part they're doing first. But over the next few years, we will continue to have to remove trees, grind stumps, and replace trees, both the city, private citizens, and then through the work of Tree Lafayette. We'll have to continue to do that.
They are going to put in over 100 trees on Arbor Day, and they are looking for volunteers.
That's true. And we very much appreciate the work they do. But this will be a continuing project for the next several years. We do have just about the entire city inventory through grants. In fact, we talked this morning at the staff meeting, we just received our last grant to do the final tree inventory for the city. It's a very small area, it's actually Colombian Park and a few areas around there, but when that's done, we have a tree inventory for the entire city completed, which will kind of be our roadmap as we begin to navigate this over the next few years. Thank you.
Any other reports from councilmen?
Not on the hand and board, but Mom is, she'd probably like to know that, everybody to know that the Ebony and Ivory Ball is this Saturday evening.
Okay, thank you. And that's the Purdue Memorial Union for Hena Community Center, correct?
Is that where it is, sure.
Okay, we will move on to the public comment portion of our evening. Just as a reminder to citizens, your comments are limited to three minutes. We ask for requests that you state your name and address when approaching the microphone, and the floor is open for public comment.
Good afternoon, my name is Antoine Butler, I'm at 2756 Shilton Drive in Lafayette. Thank you for an opportunity to share my concern with you. As I've said before, I believe there's a group of individuals in Lafayette that are not being justly treated because we're not recognizing them as people. So you're probably aware that the U.S. Code defines a person as a human being, child, or individual, including born alive infant. Subsection C of that same title also talks about, says that nothing in the U.S. Code shall be construed to deny or contract any legal or legal right, legal status or legal right of any member of the species Homo sapiens at any point prior to being born alive as defined in this section. If we look through the state code and all the way down to the local code, the individuals that are preborn are not defined as persons, were not prevented from defining them as persons, and as a result of that, their rights, I believe, are being trampled upon. So tonight, I'm asking the council again to consider sponsoring a resolution that would amend the definition of person to include all human beings or all Homo sapiens from their biological beginning until their natural death. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. We have a public comment this evening. Mr. Campbell?
Madam President, I move your adjourn.
Mr. Brown?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
We are adjourned, thank you.